In accordance with the Open Public Meetings Act PL 1975, Chapter 231, adequate notice of this regular meeting of the Board of Adjustment of the Township of Franklin has been provided. Board members, applicant professionals, and members of the public, please speak directly into microphones so that our recording secretary can properly process minutes. Applicants and professionals, please fill out the sheet on the table when you've completed your testimony. Thank you, and please call the roll.
Okay. We have several people asked to be excused. Shalobethia, Richard Prokanic, Joel Reese, and Robert Shepherd. With that said, Allen Rich.
Yes.
Gary Rosenthal.
Here.
Basim Verdas. Elizabeth Clarkin.
Here.
And Chairman Thomas.
Here.
Resolutions, Marson, I'm sorry. I move. Baginsky, ZBA 220001, move it again.
I move.
And we need a second. Okay?
Allen Rich.
One second. Yes.
Gary Rosenthal.
Yes.
Basim Verdas. And Chairman Thomas.
Yes. Marlene Edward Mattson, ZBA 2100024.
I move.
Second.
Allen Rich.
Yes.
Gary Rosenthal.
Yes.
Basim Verdas.
Yes.
And Chairman Thomas.
Yes. In the discussion, part of the agenda, Franklin Two Associates Limited, appeal of his zoning decision carried to September 15th, 2022, with notification needed. Before we go into the hearings section, moving to Sarwah Siddiqui, ZBA 220007, a variance in which the applicant has a ground-mounted solar array installed. Upon submit, all the Asville survey was discovered that it was placed closer to the front of the property line and permitted 50 feet required. Forty-seven feet existing proposed at 3 Wood Turtle Creek Franklin Park, Block 33.01, Lot 26, in the NRPC zone. It will not be heard tonight. It is carried to May 19th, and notification is needed.
Correct.
Okay? Anybody here for that? Moving on to the top of the hearing agenda, 1784 Capital Holdings LLC, ZBA 210009, D1 used variance preliminary file major site plan with variances in which the applicant is seeking approval for construction of 125,335 square-foot self-storage facility at 1613 Route 27 Somerset, Block 85, Lots 58 and 59.02, in the GB zone. That hearing is technically completed. We were coming back this evening solely to hold a vote. The members that were missing did certify, looking at the tapes and making up the meeting that was missed. Unfortunately, it's not typical of this board, but we've seemed to run into a temporary, little bit of temporarily bad luck with different circumstances with members. We do not have enough people present to have a vote on that tonight. It will be at the next meeting. There were, there was an opportunity at the end of the meeting last time for any of the missing board members to submit questions. I believe there may have been a couple of questions. Is there any board member who wants to ask the applicant, the applicant's attorney, anything?
That would be me. I just had one question. I was, I was gone during the meeting, and I did, I did view the tapes. I never heard anything about solar panels on top. Did you have any problem with installing solar panels?
Sure, and welcome back and thank you, Mr. Chair, and members of the board. For the record, Chris Murphy, attorney at Murphy, Schiller &amp; Wilkes, for, on here on behalf of the applicant. We do have Paul Much here, who's our engineer, who will, can answer that question. I will say, as a general matter, 1784 develops properties throughout the entire country. We look at solar on every single project. We would love to do solar if feasible. In certain circumstances, it's fully feasible, and others, in a limited capacity, and in others, we can't do it at all because it just doesn't work. The incentives just aren't there to make it work. But our engineer, Paul Much, who was, who was qualified as an expert in the field of engineering last time, I'd refer to the board chairman and attorney, if you would like to swear him in again, or if he's still under oath. Okay. Paul, if you could answer that question, as to this particular project. We had had a chance to look at that, and I think Paul can, can answer the question.
Yeah, and to, to build on what he said, they, they, they would prefer to do solar in all of their projects. Sometimes it just doesn't make sense based on certain circumstances. For this application, there is some preliminary data that they've, they can look at. They've seen that there's likely, there's, there's a good likelihood that they can do solar on the roof, not the whole roof, but it's certainly a portion of the roof, and they're going to move forward with that, and we'd be agreeable to a condition to the same.
Okay, thank you. Okay, that's all we're dealing with on it, and the idea of solar panels has absolutely no effect on any other part of the application, or any part of the testimony that we have heard. There is no need, and there will be no opening to the public or any other issues. We will have a full board present at the next meeting in May, and we will take a vote. I'm assuming now that everyone's curiosity up here has been satisfied, and we're all done in that sense. Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Okay. Ricardo Perez, ZBA 220004, C variance in which the applicant wishes to demolish an existing home and accessory structures to build a single-family dwelling at 178 Copper Mine Road, Princeton, Block 11.01, Lot 66.02, in Canal Preservation Zone. Is Mr. Perez here?
Are you representing Mr. Perez?
Mr. Perez.
Perez? Yes, please come to the table, sir. Hi.
The mic.
Okay, sir, you can, who's Mr. Ivanko, or who's, who's representing?
Mr. Ivanko.
Okay. So are you going to be doing all the talking, sir?
Yeah.
Okay, so you want to take a mic, and you want to be sworn in by the attorney, and then as you call whomever you've brought with you, they have to wait to be sworn in if they're going to give statements? And do you have something you need to plug in to the cord right there, so we can see it on the, on this large screen?
We did not bring.
Okay, that's, you have paper? Okay. Please make sure you remember to sign in when you're done with your testimony, so that the recording secretary knows who you are and what position you're holding, okay? Thank you.
All right. Yeah, so I'm Kevin Ivanko. I'm a licensed architect in the state of New Jersey.
Can you raise your right hand? Do you swear the testimony about to give will be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
Yes.
And if you.
You, you are a licensed architect in New Jersey. It's active. You've testified before boards.
I have not yet.
Is your mic on, sir? Because you're really not.
And your, your testimony this evening is to the architecture of the house?
Correct.
Can you give us your professional educational background, purposes of qualifying you?
Okay, so I did my undergrad at Lehigh University in Pennsylvania. I got my master's degree at NJIT in Newark. I have since logged my hours. I have since passed all my exams, licensed with the state of New Jersey.
And you, but you have never testified before a zoning or planning board?
Correct.
Okay. You got to start sometime.
You need.
You can. You have all the paperwork.
Yeah. All right. So I've got the affidavit of service here.
That comes to me.
Christine. So we notified the newspapers. We notified everyone within 200 feet of the.
You can sit down, sir. You don't have to stand.
Yeah, so we notified everyone within 200-foot radius. Our newspaper notice was put in 10 days in advance as well, and we're here seeking variances for the project. It's a single-family home. The existing structure is on site. There was an existing home and two accessory structures, all of which would be demolished and removed from the site, and the proposed structure would go up in its place. In regard to the comments we received back from the zoning board, from the planner.
Well, let's, let's look at it this way. As far as the review comments go, is there anything you can't comply with?
No, we're open to comply with all of this, and we'll get that taken care of.
Okay, we need to, all right, first of all, we look at the, at the variances. Is it true, Mr. Healy, most of them are, many of them are existing with the present use?
Yeah, yes. And, Mr. Chairman, if I could suggest, so the variances on, and I think where you're getting to is that the variances on paper look bad, but they're largely reflective of existing conditions. So for example, the, the lot area requirement is six acres. The existing lot is 1.2. Same frontage, it's similarly deficient, and there's setback deficiencies, building coverage, and impervious coverage. But in the staff report, we had indicated that because the site is already developed, they're tearing down those existing, the existing buildings and putting up a new one. So what I would suggest is, once you show the board, and make a comparison between what exists and what's proposed, both in terms of the site layout, and then in terms of the architecture. And, and did you go before the historic commission?
Yes.
Okay, and then also let the board know what comments were made by the historic commission, and if you've incorporated those comments into your plans.
Okay. All right, so as far as the existing. All right, I'm not sure how well you can see, but as far as the existing building, there currently is a home here, a barn structure here, and a shed in the back. Those three are to be removed, and then we are going to be proposing this building here, which should be an overall smaller footprint than the three existing structures together. And as you can see, with the primary residence being here previously, we're going to be moving it further from the road on this side, as well as on the front here. As far as the historical word, some comments we received from them were in relation primarily to the exterior. And their, their comments included the textural changes of the material on the facade. We were initially showing a wood plank. They were changed to a smooth plank. And then the lattice work below the stairs at the front, and at the rear of the building here, were changed from a 45-degree to a 90-degree. And we have since received approval from them. We've also gone to the DRCC. We've received a few comments back from them. We're getting them addressed, and we're going to be replying to them pending any other changes that might come about after tonight's meeting.
Okay, one of the comments I, I think that needs to be addressed, is we have to decide if it's a three-story or two stories, half the height of the basement above ground, or what was decided there?
So as of, as of today, I went through, figured out the area of that floor that is covered below grade and above. Right now, it's at 51% exposed. What we're proposing we do is to adjust, adjust the grade along this left-side elevation of the house. It will not be a substantial adjustment versus what you see here, but we will comply and be below that, that 50% requirement.
So there will, it will be a two-story house?
Yes.
And then there was a similar comment. So building heights measured as 35 feet from the finished grade, you have two frontages, and then that was comment three, and then comment four was what you just spoke to.
Yep.
So what I'm hearing then is, you're not seeking a variance, so whatever changes you need to make, to make the building comply, that's what you're going to do?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. And then the TRC report indicated that there was an approximate 716 square-foot decrease in impervious coverage? Can you speak to that?
Right, so with the redesign of the driveway and the relocation of the house, and going from the, the three current existing structures, removing them and having just the single, we're going to be, we're going to be a smaller impervious coverage for the lot.
Okay, and then there are some setback variances. Generally, do you know, is the existing, or I'm sorry, the proposed house, is that going to be set back closer, similar, or further away from the road than the existing structures?
Further from the road, in both cases, since it is a corner lot, but further from the road.
Okay, thank you.
Yep.
Does anybody have any board questions? Is there anything else that you need to offer?
Oh, is there a quorum for the vote?
Yes.
Are there enough planning board members for the vote?
We're fine with it, yeah.
For this type of variance?
But we have to open to the public before we get to that. So is there anybody in the public, in the audience out there who would like to speak concerning this application, or ask questions, testimony? Okay, then we'll close. Does anybody need more information?
Also, if anyone would like any information from the state engineer, he is here as well.
Okay. I think we can take a motion.
Okay, I make a motion that we approve on here. ZBA 220000, I'm sorry, that's the wrong one. ZBA 2200004, with all the conditions that were discussed about.
Okay, Allen Rich.
Yes.
Gary Rosenthal.
Yes.
Basim Verdas. Elizabeth Clarkin. And Chairman Thomas.
Yes, okay. Good, good luck with your, your project.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay. We finally get to announce this project without saying it's going to be put off again, since I guess it's been on the boards here for quite a while. Si Data Mandier Incorporated, ZBA 1900037, D3 conditional use variance, C variances, a site plan in which the applicant wants to construct a 28,616 square-foot place of worship at 583 South Middlebush Road Somerset, Block 36.01, Lot 6.03, in the A-zone, agricultural zone, carried from April 7th, 2022, and no further notification was needed. If you, if you're a moment's there to get set up. I will say, before we will start the, formally start the application, I guess there's a, a matter to be discussed, brought up by the attorney for some objectors concerning the status of this property as a flag lot or not a flag lot. So I think Ms. Bailey has some advice or questions for the board. We'll hear her presentation, and then Mr. Healy has some presentation to make.
Is this one? Yep. Good evening, Chairman Thomas, and ladies and gentlemen of the board. Martina Bailey, on behalf of Ray and John Snyder, who, whose family residences are immediately adjacent to the, the site of this application on the south and the southwest of the property. I'd like to refer to a letter that I sent to the board last week dated April 26th, in which I raised the question that I think needs to be resolved before this application can be heard. It's a jurisdictional question. May I submit this letter as an exhibit for this application?
It's already been provided to the board.
Well, for the record, I'll summarize then the content of the letter.
Yeah, if you would, because I think they've all had it, and they've all had an opportunity to read it.
Sure. The question is whether the site is a, is a flag lot. And the reason it's a jurisdictional question is because houses of worship are expressly prohibited from flag lots, and that's in the conditional use provisions for houses of worship in the Franklin Ordnance. Initially, when I looked at this site plan, it didn't jump out at me as a, as a flag lot, but the more I thought about it and looked at it, and read the provisions of the flag lot ordinance in the Franklin, in the Franklin Ordnance, it became clear to me that every one of the criteria and the definition of a flag lot is met by this site. As I outlined in my letter of April 26th, a flag, a flag lot is defined under the ordinance as a lot or parcel created by subdivision that doesn't have the required length of frontage on a public street, is connected to a public street by means of a flag pole, and I'll get into the definition of a flag pole, because I think this turns on that question. And then thirdly, is located behind a lot or portion of a lot which has frontage on a public street. Now, all of those things are met by the Si Data site. And I can go into the details of that, the 400 feet is required, but the frontage is actually 357.92 feet, for which a variance is being sought. It's, it's connected to South Middlebush by means of a flag pole, and it's located between, behind two lots that have frontage on South Middlebush Road, and that, those are Lots 6.02 and Lot 7, both of which are owned by Ray Snyder. Now, a flag pole is defined under the ordinance as a narrow strip or a projection of land extending from the public right-of-way to the buildable portion of a flag lot. As I said in my letter, well, it's not, obviously, the, the shape of this site may not conform to what we typically think of as a flag pole, but it does. A flag pole, and I think the critical part of the definition is that it's not just a narrow strip, it's a projection of land which extends from the public right-of-way to the buildable portion of, of the flag pole, which it does in this case. The inquiry could stop there, but I think there are two other provisions of the flag pole ordinance which provide a formula, which also supports the conclusion that the Si Data site is a flag pole, is a, it's a flag lot. And those standards are that the minimum area of the flag lot, which is excluding the area of the flag pole, is more than 1.5 times greater than that required in the zone, with the flag lot area being at least 992,000 square feet, whereas 1.5 times that is required in the zone, area of 12, 12 acres, which is equivalent to 784,000 square feet. And providing the actual numbers here, because it's the criteria that applies, the minimum width of the flag pole is at least 30 feet. Here, it's much more than that, of course, the, the, the frontage is 357 feet, while the maximum length from the public street to the buildable portion of the flag lot does not exceed two times the minimum lot frontage of the zone. I'll, I'll just pass that for you. So the, the, the frontage here is required to be 400 feet. If you take twice that, it's 800 feet. And if you look at the site, and you calculate the, the length of the flag pole up towards, considered the, the buildable portion of the lot, it's, it certainly doesn't exceed 800 feet. It's less than that. It's not marked on the site plans, but I think it's quite clear if you look at the site plan. And the site has relatively narrow frontage in relation to its depth, with, which I think is sort of the fundamental criteria that we think of to define a, a flag lot. Now, I thought about this a lot, because clearly, this application has been in the works for more than two years, and there's been, you know, a conclusion made that it's not a flag pole. We wouldn't be here probably, or the application would have been different had the conclusion been that this is a flag lot. So I asked Mr. Healy, the zoning officer, whether it was a flag lot, because my reading of it concluded that it was. In an email exchange, he said, no, he didn't think so. And the reason he didn't think so was because the flag pole is, is, is not assessed by a narrow strip of land. And he's picking up on the, the definition of a flag pole in the ordinance. With all due respect to Mr. Healy, I don't think the inquiry can stop there, because the definition clearly goes on to say, or a projection of land. It's not just a narrow strip. So while I think the board can certainly consider the conclusions of its zoning officer and give deference to that, if, and the question of an interpretation of its ordinance is not clear, I think this ordinance is actually very clear. I think the governing body's intent, if, if it was to narrow the definition and the meaning of a flag lot to only those lots with a very narrow flag pole, it, it would have said so. But it, it really didn't, and in fact, it, it provides for a much broader definition of what a flag pole is. So with all due respect to Mr. Healy, I don't think his conclusion is correct. So I'm, I'm asking this board, under the powers given to it by the municipal land use law and by the Franklin ordinance, to render a decision, make a legal interpretation based on the provisions, as I've described them in my letter. Because if this board concludes that the lot is a flag lot, houses of worship are not permitted, and this application would have to be amended.
Any questions from the board?
Mr. Chairman, may I reply?
Mr. Healy.
Okay, well, first I'll note that twice you said, with all due respect to me, my response to you doesn't, it goes beyond what, what you stated. I had a further reply to your response, which you conveniently neglected to include in your letter to the board. And what I said to you was, lastly, I'll say that per the definition of flag pole, that area is not only defined as being narrow, but it indicates that the area projects from the street to the buildable portion of the lot. Thus, the flag pole by definition is so narrow that it does not contain any buildable area. In order to be a flag pole, it cannot contain buildable area. This lot, in the little presentation I'll show you, is so wide, at up to 400 feet in width, there's actually 250 feet of buildable area in this narrower portion of the lot. So by definition. So by definition, this is not a flag pole, and I'll go into a little bit more. It does, this lot contain, there are three elements to a flag lot. Does not have the required length of frontage on a public street. This lot has about 360 feet of frontage where 400 is required, so it meets that part. It meets the third part, partially. Third part says is located behind a lot or a portion of a lot which has frontage on a public street. This lot does have, does extend behind at least two homes. So I would say that it does meet C. But it says it has to be connected to a public street by means of a flag pole. Our ordinance says, defines the flag pole, again, as a narrow strip or projection of land extending from the public right-of-way to the buildable portion of a lot. And if I can get this going here, I'm not sure why that's not going, I'll explain, and I'll have some pictures to show samples of what are flag lots. You're, you're going to be presenting from laptop as well? Well, we can do the, we can take a few minutes to set up the TV because apparently this is... It's working?
Yeah.
Stop things for a few minutes? it's not a flag lot as flag lots are commonly known in the land use field. I'm going to show, what this is showing is, is a book called The Latest Illustrated Book of Development Definitions from the Center for Urban Policy Research. This is, you know, a pretty standard book that land use practitioners use when they're coming up with ordinances and they want to understand how different zoning and land use terms are defined. I'm going to start with the, with the figure, and this, this is a typical flag lot here. This is the, the lot that's in front. The planning board, this board doesn't see them, but the planning board gets one or two of these a year. And you have the, what this definition is calling the staff, the narrow, this is calling it a private right-of-way, to the buildable portion behind the front lot. And you're also seeing here, this is the building envelope. This is a little figure showing different types of lots, corner lot, interior lot, and a flag lot. Again, this is a common type of lot configuration, where you have this long, narrow projection from the street to the buildable portion behind it. You have the definition from this, from this book. It's a lot not meeting, not meeting the minimum lot frontage requirements, and where access to the public road is by a private right-of-way or driveway. Then it defines what a right-of-way is. And again, that's what they're calling this, that's what this book is calling this, what we call a flag pole. It's a strip of land acquired by reservation, dedication, condemnation, et cetera, intended to be occupied by a street, crosswalk, railroad, electric transmission line, gas pipeline. These are all long, linear features. To, so it's, so it's, this would be a long and narrow area to accommodate, well, for this purpose, it would be for vehicular access and for electric, gas, things like that, utilities to serve the property. What's a strip of land? In zoning, some terms, a lot of terms, you, you are not defined, they're not necessarily zoning terms, you have to use the common use of the word. So what is a strip of land? It's a long, narrow area of land, long and narrow. This is our, so our definition in the ordinance mirrors that. We have already talked about this, doesn't meet the frontage, located behind a lot, is connected to a street by means of a flag pole. Flag pole, a narrow strip or projection of land extending from the right-of-way to the buildable portion of a flag lot. Now, I'm showing some examples of flag lots in Franklin Township. This is Amwell Road, this is Elizabeth. Here you have a flag lot, just like that definition, that drawing, this is a real-life example. Here's the fronting lot, here's the flag lot, here's the long, narrow projection where the driveway is and utilities to serve the home that's in the buildable portion behind the front lot. Same configuration here, long and narrow, to get back here. Same exact configuration here, long and narrow, to get back to this portion. This is the subject lot. Subject lot is 360 feet in width, longer than a football field. At this point, it's 410 feet in width. The orange part is the, the setback lines. This is the buildable, this is the building envelope. The notice that the building envelope extends into this more narrow portion of the lot. It's not a flag pole. Flag pole doesn't have, by definition, does not have a buildable portion in it. This buildable portion is 235 feet here and extends out to 260 feet in width back here. To answer the question of why there is not a maximum width of a flag pole, the only answer I could say to that is, there's just absolutely no reason for a municipality to have a maximum. When you have a land use regulation, it has to have a sort of legitimate public purpose. We have a minimum of 30 feet, and that does have legitimate public purpose, governmental interest, in that you have to have a minimum amount of land for the road, for the driveway. There's very specific design requirements for the driveway, certain width, there's certain requirements for how it must be built in terms of the pavement, et cetera. Within that 30 feet, you have to have area for, for the utilities to serve the property. There's also a requirement for screening, so you need that, at least 30 feet. If a developer chose to make that flag lot 50 feet, 60 feet, 70 feet, 80 feet, there's no reason for the government to prevent that. There's no harm being made by somebody making that, that flag pole wider. That's why there, that's why there is no maximum flag pole. It's not, it's, that's the reason. And then lastly, what I'll say is, if the board was to find that this lot was a flag lot, at the end of Ms. Bailey's letter, she said it would, it would require a D1 use variance. That is not the case. Places of worship are permitted use in Schedule I. They are conditional permitted use, subject to the conditional use standards in the ordinance. The prohibition of, of, of having a place of worship on a, on a flag lot is a conditional use standard. So if the board, if the board found this was a flag pole, it would not be, doesn't change the fact that it's a permitted use, it'd be another, it'd be a standard that they would have to prove, it'd be a D3 conditional use variance, and the applicant would, would be required to prove to you that the use continues to be appropriate for the use despite that deviation. That's my response. If, if any questions from Ms. Bailey or the board, I'd be happy to answer them.
Just one question. In the, in the case of the last scenario you mentioned, if we found it was a flag pole, this application would still be here in front of this board, just hearing an additional variance?
Well, the, the first answer to that question, yes. As far as notice, I'd have to defer to, to Frank, but it would absolutely, jurisdiction would be before this board.
No matter the issue of notice or anything else, when it's all said and done, when the hearing starts and the testimony begins, it's going to be in this room in front of this board. And all we would have done, it's to lie it to take care of any other issues, you know, that's if this were a flag.
D3, D3 conditional use variances under the municipal land use law are by the zoning board.
Correct. Mark is correct.
Right. Any board questions for either person? I, I just find it interesting that if I were an individual property owner and I owned this property, theoretically, I could build my house on South Middlebush Road in that quote "flagpole" section, maybe there would be a variance for a frontage. I'd just have a big, huge, irregularly shaped backyard, right?
Well, yeah, and, and actually, in terms of what this is showing is, these are the applicable setbacks for the place of worship. So if the applicant could have chosen to place a portion of the building within that area, within that orange, within those orange stripes.
And don't most flag lots, and I don't know if this address pertains to the technical definition, involve two, two different lots, most likely with two different owners? You have the owner of the lot with the frontage, and the one in the back, as the examples that you gave, where the flag pole goes and provides access to, is usually another separate lot with another owner, another house in most cases. This lot's one, this is one complete, single lot.
Yeah, well, I, I don't think, what you're talking about is, is how flag lots are created. Usually you have a, again, a, a, a lot that's more than two and a half times, if I recall correctly, that's the requirement, more than two and a half times to, to lot size in that in the zone. It's generally considerably longer than it is, than it is wide, so they do this type of configuration, where again, they, they don't have enough frontage to have two lots side by side, but they have sufficient depth in that lot, so they put the second home in the back. If, if this was, I think, to answer your question, if this lot was shaped in this way, where there was, where the portion that was closer, closest to the frontage was so narrow that it did not contain any buildable portion, then I would say that there's, that an argument could be made that it's a flag lot. But here you have, again, a lot that is wider than a football field and has a buildable portion within it that is in excess of 250 feet.
Okay, Mr. Chairman, that's from a legal perspective, that is a, a positive issue here, is that it doesn't, it's not a flag pole, in my opinion, and even from a legal perspective, because of what Mark just said, that the front of the build, the front of the lot is buildable.
And, and what I will say...
It's not a buildable lot, the front that, that connects to the public street, and, and that situation doesn't exist here.
No more questions, Frank?
And then, just one, just real quick, if I could just, so I should have said before, yeah, just to put my qualifications, you know, I'm not just, I'm a zoning officer, but I'm also a licensed planner in American, a member of the American Institute of Certified Planners. So I'm providing testimony as well as I'm saying this. The, the, I think there is one element of the flag lot ordinance that you may want to keep in, keep in, into consideration as you're reviewing this application, and that is that this lot does extend behind two, if not three, I forget now, residential homes. The purpose of that flag, one of the purposes of that flag lot prohibition was, a long time ago, on a lot that was much, much smaller than this, but we had an application for a place of worship that was on a flag lot and was kind of being tucked behind homes. And like, and, and it was surrounded, basically on all sides, by homes. And the concern was, in that type of situation, you know, the potential impacts to those surrounding neighbors could be more significant than perhaps other situations. Here you do have a situation where it does extend behind other, some homes. You may want to consider that in the review of this application. Has the applicant provided sufficient distance from those homes? Has the applicant provided sufficient buffering from those homes? So I think, again, I think even though I don't think it, it is a flag lot, I don't think that, that section of the ordinance applies, I, but I think the intent, again, to protect homes where they have a place of worship behind them, I would recommend you consider that.
Yes, a couple. Mr. Healy mentioned that the, that the ordinance does not provide a maximum width of a flag pole, it does conspicuously provide a minimum of 30 feet. The reason for that is because a maximum would be completely meaningless unless it was defined in terms of a relationship, because you can't define a flag pole by a number that is a maximum. It has to be defined in terms of the length and the depth of the lot, which is why I think this ordinance could have made that, could have provided that formula, but didn't. We'll have a need, and because it does provide a couple of formulas for the, for the dimensions of the, the flag pole. Most, most significantly, Section C, which I cited in my letter, subsection one of Section C, which defines the flag pole in the standard, the minimum width to be 30 feet, but it goes on to say that the maximum length of the flag pole from the public street to the buildable portion of the flag lot shall not exceed two times the minimum lot frontage of the zone. And what that means is that you could have a square. So that's the first thing to say. So in terms of how this actually appears, it meets that definition now. Get into the buildable portion. Am I correct that the red line on the diagram is the 200, is a, is 100 foot, or is that 200 feet setback?
The red, the red line is the property line.
The, the setback line?
The orange is the setback line, so from the South Middlebush, I believe it's 100 feet, and the setbacks, the side setbacks are 75.
Right. Well, what about the scenic corridor, corridor setback requirement, which I thought was at least twice the required front setback for the zone district in which the property is located?
We can answer that in the appropriate time, but are we...
But I think if, if that's the threshold question, which Mr. Reagan has suggested it is, then I think we need to define what the buildable portion of the, the lot is. And if it's, if it's 400, if it's 200 feet, that lot, that frontage setback line actually extends another 100 feet.
It is 200 feet.
Does that change your conclusion?
Uh, not really. Again, I think it's still, it, it, there is still a portion, that, that red line right here extends 233 feet, so there would still be about a 33 foot wide or a deep section that could be buildable. But it doesn't also, doesn't address the fact that the property is 360 feet in width at the frontage and extending out to 400 feet. And, and let me speak to, since you did mention the maximum, again, the reason why there's no maximum is because it doesn't, when you do land use in zoning ordinances, it has to address a legitimate public purpose. There is absolutely no public purpose that I can...
feet, and the setbacks, the side setbacks are 75.
Right. But what about the scenic corridor, corridor setback requirement, which I thought was at least twice the required front setback for the zone district in which the property is located?
We can answer that in the appropriate time, but are we-
But I think it's, if that's the threshold question, which Mr. Reagan has suggested it is, then I think we need to define what the buildable portion of the, the lot is. And if it's, if it's 400, if it's 200 feet, that lot, that frontage setback line actually extends another 100 feet. Does that change your conclusion?
Uh, not really. Again, I think it's still, it, it, there is still a portion that, that red line right here extends 233 feet, so there would still be about a 33 foot wide or a deep section that could be buildable. But it doesn't also, doesn't address the fact that the property is 360 feet in width after frontage and extending out to 400 feet. And then we speak to, since you did mention the maximum, again, the reason why there's no maximum is because it doesn't, when you do land use and zoning ordinances, it has to address a legitimate public purpose. There is absolutely no public purpose that I can think of why you would have a maximum. As far as the, the, the maximum length, the reason why that is there is because the, you know, there's, for emergency access purposes, and, and, and you don't want to have a flaglot that extends a half mile into the woods. If they're going to have a half mile access, they're going to have to build a public road. If it's going to be the length of a residential driveway, then that's fine, and the township has put a cap on that of two and a half, two and a half times the, the length or the depth. But you can't have a flaglot where it's, again, a half mile long. If you're going to do that, you're going to build a road.
But what you're suggesting is, that part of the definition is actually met by the site, that the flagpole length is actually not more than twice the frontage. Correct?
I don't know what you're, I honestly, I don't, I don't know what you're asking, and how it relates-
You're talking about Section C, Subsection One, which establishes that the minimum width shall be 30 feet, and at the maximum length of the flagpole, and when we're talking about the flagpole here, we're talking about that protrusion of land that fronts on South Middlebush Road.
So which section are you referring to again?
So Section 112 dash 72, C1, which is in Schedule B of my letter.
Okay, well, I mean, I'll reiterate what I said before, what the purpose of that is. The purpose of that is so that there's, that the, the driveway serving the flaglot in the rear is of a certain limited length of a residential driveway, and you don't have flaglots extending excessive depths from the public right of way. I, I don't understand, I honestly don't, I still don't understand how that relates to, you have to restate that.
Because I think what we're disagreeing now-
I'm not disagreeing, I understand your question.
I think the disagreement on what the critical, what this question turns on, we should decide what the question turns on. Does it turn on whether the flagpole is buildable, or does it turn on something else? And what I think we've established is that there's a 200 foot setback, which means you're really left with about 33 feet of that flagpole area.
I think the question turns on whether this is a flagpole, that's the- By any definition, common understanding and as defined in our ordinance. This, and, and I've explained how, by the common definition of, of what a flagpole is understood to be, I've showed examples in the Illustrated Book of Development Definitions, I gave you examples of, from Franklin Township, these are real world examples of what the flaglots actually are, and they're nothing even remotely close to this.
That's fine. As I said in my presentation, the definition has two parts to it, both a narrow strip, which is what the examples suggest, or a protrusion of land. And if you go on to read the rest of the ordinance, there's no formula that provides a, a, a relationship between the flagpole and the buildable portion that would meet the definition as you suggested, and not the site plan. And I appreciate your reference to the developer's definition, which you referred to, but as I also said, the ordinance is clear, and the board's job is to interpret, to begin with the plain meaning of the ordinance, and that is the board's job. If there's an ambiguity in the ordinance, then it's reasonable and legitimate that the board considers other evidence, other extrinsic evidence, such as provided by Mr. Healy. The board doesn't have to do that in this case, because the ordinance is clear.
So let me just ask you, I wonder what, I'm not sure what, what formula you're thinking of, but when the definition of a flagpole is a narrow strip or projection of land, again, I've said this is 360 feet in width, going up to 400 feet. Again, this is the width of a foot, longer than a football field. How is that a narrow projection of land?
It doesn't say narrow projection of land, it says narrow strip or projection of land.
Okay, you're, you're, I'll say it's a narrow strip or projection, you're saying it's a narrow strip, or a projection. It's a narrow strip or projection. That's the intent of what the flagpole is. You're, you're partsing words and twisting them in some bizarre way that's not what the intent of, and not consisting with, again, our definition of a flaglot and, and a common definition of, of, of what land use practitioners and anybody who practices zoning considers to be a flaglot.
I think we've probably beat this to death in terms of Mr. Healy's explanation. Do you have anything further to add?
No, just that I disagree also with, I think this is a legal question, and it's the board that has jurisdiction over the, the legal questions of interpreting its ordinance, not the zoning officer. I'd also disagree with-
Excuse me, as I said, I'm a professional planner. I gave planning testimony. I've been sworn, that was planning testimony. Thank you.
And you're, so it's a decision of the board?
That's correct. I, I would just lastly say, I disagree that this, if the board agrees that it's a flaglot, that all that would be required would be a D three variance, and that is because this is not like other D three conditions, this is a use condition. And so it would be an absurd conclusion.
We haven't gotten there yet.
Okay, but I would like to say, it would be an absurd conclusion to define this as a flaglot and then go on to require nothing more than a D three variance, this would be a use variance.
It's under the conditional use standards.
Conditional use variance. So anyway, we're not going to debate that issue, the first issue, and for the board, or the, the only issue at this stage for the board to decide upon is whether this is a flaglot.
All right.
You've heard from the zoning officer. I concur with Mark's opinion. I don't believe the property meets the definition of a flagpole, that front portion. I believe the front portion of the site is buildable, notwithstanding the setbacks, and it's ultimately the board's decision to determine whether this is a flaglot or not.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
And I just, maybe this is a mistake, but in the interest of being all inclusive, do you have anything to add? I would be shocked if you have nothing.
I, I really-
For the record.
Yeah, for the record, let me identify myself since I, since I did at the beginning, Peter Lanford appearing on behalf of the applicant. I'm not even going to get into the issue of whether it is or is not a flaglot. I think Mr. Healy answered that question, and Mr. Reagan did. I, I think there was a threshold question in that Mr. Healy received communication from Ms. Bailey sometime in April, inquiring as to what his opinion is concerning the flaglot, and he gave her his decision. If he didn't like his, if she didn't like his decision statutorily, she needs to request a formal interpretation of the board, which I don't think she did, she didn't pay an application fee, so I, I even think the board doesn't even have jurisdiction to hear the issue appeniscio, because she never made a request for an interpretation, never filed an application fee, never gave the appropriate notice. But having said that, I still, I think the ultimate conclusion that was reached by Mr. Healy and Mr. Reagan is correct.
All right, board, any questions, comments? The appropriate action, I believe, would be a motion to accept this, Mr. Healy's definition of a flaglot, or-
Yep.
And you either vote yes or no. So I will make that motion that the board accept Mr. Healy's testimony as to the definition of a flaglot, as to the definition that we will be operating under. Is there a second?
And that this is not a flaglot.
And this is not a flaglot.
This particular applicant, property, and applicant.
There's a second.
I'll second.
Alan Ridge?
It's, I'll vote it's not a flaglot.
Gary Rosenthal? Yes, it's not a flaglot, I guess?
A yes vote if it's-
Okay, I just wanted to make sure I get it right on the record.
Yeah.
Okay. Where am I, Gary? Vaseem Burdas?
Yes, it's not a flag-
Elizabeth Clarkin?
Yes, it's not a flaglight.
And Chairman Thomas?
Yes. Okay, we put that to rest, and we'll be starting the hearing.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. This, before I call my first witness, this application was actually filed in 2019. As the board is very well aware, this application was filed after another house of worship in close proximity to this property was filed. That application was heard by the board, this board, and it took, I believe it was 11 meetings in one year to get to resolution of that application. So we've been waiting to move forward on this application pending the completion of that other application. Unfortunately, a lot of the testimony you're going to hear this evening, and whatever, how many meetings we have, and hopefully there won't be many, is going to be substantially similar to the testimony you heard in the previous application. However, this is a different site, there are different conditions, and there will be different testimony. In the scope of the testimony, I'm going to present the testimony of a representative of the temple. I'm going to present testimony of our architect, our site engineer, our traffic consultant, and our planner. This evening, being overly optimistic, I think I have three witnesses here, but we'll start and see how many we can get through this evening. With respect to the application itself, it is a D three variance, which, again, the board has heard all of this, but I think for, for the record, the use is a permitted use in the zone. The deviations from the D three standards are that the parking is not located behind the house of worship, and will present testimony as to the sighting of the parking, and we don't have, meet all of the buffer requirements of the D three standards, and will give you testimony and reasons why we don't provide all of the buffering. As far as all of the other setbacks for the zone, we meet and far exceed all of the setback requirements, the front yard, rear yard, side yard setbacks. You'll hear testimony as to the, why we sighted the house of worship where we did and how we did, and the distances from adjoining properties. I will start this evening by calling Mr. Chivukula as my first witness.
You swear a testimony about to give me the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
Oh, help me God.
If you could just spell and say and spell your name for the record.
Upeendra, U.P.E.N.D.R.A., Chivukula, C.H.I.V.U.K.U.L.A.
You can be seated, Mr. Chivukula. Mr. Chivukula, are you a member of the congregation that will be operating this church or house of worship once it's approved?
Yes, I am, yeah.
Okay, and where do you reside?
I live in, on 536 New Brunswick Road, Somerset, New Jersey.
Okay. And the temple that we are proposing to construct, the entity that will own and operate the temple is a nonprofit religious organization?
That's correct.
Okay. And how long has that organization been in existence?
More than 10 years, yeah.
Okay. And does that organization currently have a place of worship?
Yes, currently they have place 1665 Oak Tree Road in Edison, New Jersey.
Okay. And how long has that house of worship been in operation?
Before coming to Edison, it was in South Plainfield, and started in 2014, so the last two years has been at the current location in Edison.
Okay. And in Edison, do you own the house of worship, or are you a tenant in a facility?
I'm a tenant in a facility.
Okay. And you are looking now to construct your own facility here in Franklin Township?
That is correct, yeah.
And the facility, if, if the board were to grant the variance approval for this facility on South Middlebush Road, will you continue to operate the facility in Edison?
That is correct, yeah. Edison facility has a bait, because there's a large population of Indian Americans around Edison area.
Okay, so that, that house of worship will remain?
Will remain.
Okay, and you selected this site on South Middlebush Road to build a new facility?
That is correct.
And why did you select this site?
We wanted to build, there is a temple in Shirdi, which is about 145 miles from Mumbai, and there is a place called Shirdi Sai Baba Temple.
And you spell that because somebody's going to have to translate that?
Yeah, I'll do this, sorry. Shirdi is spelled S.H.I.R.D.I. Sai, S.A.I.B.A.B.A., Sai Baba, and it's temple in Shirdi, of course, and it's about 145 miles from Mumbai in India.
Okay. And the temple that you are proposing to build here in Franklin Township replicates that temple?
Yes, that is the intent, yeah, trying to build, Shirdi is a village, and that temple has been in existence for more than 100 years, and we want to bring it to America.
Okay. Now, is there, or will there be a difference between the temple in Edison and the temple in Somerset?
There are different, many differences. First difference, the temple in Edison is called Sri, Sriwishnu Temple, I'll spell it for you. S.R.I., S.H.I.V.A., V.I.S.H.N.U., Temple NJ. And this is a temple that houses more than 10 deities. Basically, in Hindu faith, you have manifestations of one god, and it is 10, these are manifestations are on display, and the people come to worship different manifestations.
Okay. And the temple in Somerset, how many deities will there be there?
There will be only Sai Baba, S.A.I.B.A.B.A.
Okay. And are there other Sai Baba temples in central Jersey?
Of course, yeah. The one, one was in Woodbridge, this is in Eastwood Section 27, then of course, this one in Edison, and you have one in Lawrenceville, and there's one in South Brunswick, adjacent to Plainsboro, there's one in North Brunswick on Carlos Milar, Lord Johnson Johnson property.
Okay. Now, the facility that we are proposing to build in Franklin Township, which according to the plans is approximately slightly under 29,000 square feet, is that correct?
That's correct.
Okay. And can you briefly indicate to the board how that facility will operate? In other words, is it going to be open six days a week, seven days a week, and what hours?
Yeah, it, it can be open seven days a week, and weekdays excepting those day, the hours of operation will be from 8:00 AM to 12:30 PM, from 5:00 PM to 9:30 PM, and then, and then Saturday and Sunday from 8:00 AM to 9:30 PM.
And is the house of worship one that has fixed services, or do people come in and worship the deity and then leave?
Yeah, this is basically what's known as a rolling audience, where people come and they pray and they go. There are four times during the day, performers called aarti, it's A.A.R.T.I., that is, like a service in a church, and where people stand in front of the deity and chanting the music, and that's only time they congregate and then they leave after that.
Okay. And based on your knowledge of the existing facility, and based on your knowledge of the other facilities in this area, do you have any projections as to what the attendance would be during the times that the facility is open?
Yes. Monday, Tuesday, and Friday, approximately 20 to 30 deities during the- Yes, Monday, Tuesday, and Friday, approximately 20 to 30 devotees during the morning hours, and because people prefer going to work, they stop by and pray and go, and 40 to 50 devotees during evening hours after returning from work, and they come there. And on Wednesdays, 20 to 30 devotees during morning hours, about 25 to 35 devotees during evening hours, and Thursday, 40 to 50 devotees during morning hours, and 150 to 200 devotees during evening hours.
Why is Thursday different?
Thursday is the main day for Sai Baba, S.A.I.B.A.B.A., and people, that's a very special day, and because it's a spiritual teacher, Thursday signifies the importance of the guru teacher, and so people spend that day very important.
Okay, and you indicated you have, the facility will be open on Saturdays and Sundays also, correct?
Right, from Saturday, Saturdays and Sundays are open from 8:00 a.m. to 9:30 p.m., there's no break in between, and about 100, 100 to 120 devotees come in, come during the morning hours, and 150 to 200 devotees during evening hours.
Okay, so during the course of the 12-hour period that you're open, you'd have approximately 200, a little over 200 devotees?
That's correct.
During the course of the day? And again, they're all, as you used the word rolling, they're in, they come in for a short period of time, visit the idol, and then leave?
That's correct, yeah, because I think, you know, there's not a fixed place where they sit down and then stay there for a long period of time. They come, they do their prayers, and then just take a, go around the second fence, and then they go home.
Okay. Are there special holidays or holy days that you have in your religion?
Yeah, there are, you know, since you are replicating what's happening in Shirdi in India, that there are three main holidays, and the Hindu calendar, they follow the lunar calendar, so the dates, our calendar dates will differ, but for example, this year, we have the three festivals, one is called Ram Naami, so I spell it for you, R.A.M.N.A.V.A.M.I., and that holiday has taken place, let's see, what day, April 10, April 10 to 2022, but next year it could be end of March, so it's a lunar calendar, which is different. And also Guru, G.U.R.U., Puranima, P.U.R.N.I.M.A. Puranima means it's like a full moon, so the day, there's a full moon, and where the guru is teacher, Sai Baba is the teacher, and Surya worship, that is a special day, and that is what happens on this year, on July 13, 2022. And of course, the third one is called Vijaya Dashami, V.I.J.A.Y.A.D.A.S.H.A.M.I., and that occurs October 5, 2022.
So each of these special holy days are one-day events?
One-day, that's right.
Okay, and do you have a projection as to how many people you envision attending during the course of that day?
Yeah, I think about 350 people, and again, it's also rolling, right, there's come and go.
Okay, now, you and I have discussed that with other houses of worship, Franklin Township had concerns when these high holy days take place with larger crowds coming to the house of worship, and the need to meet with the township before those events to discuss your anticipated attendance, and whether you would need police to direct traffic coming on and off the site.
As we discussed, the important thing in South Middle Bush Road is that it can be a busy road, as I types, and for the safety of the people who are attending there, and also making sure that traffic is, traffic rules are followed, and I think definitely really consulting the township, working with the township staff, making arrangements, give them up, up front notice, and then make the arrangements.
Okay, and if the board were to impose that as a condition of approval, you would, you would have no objection to that?
I don't think so. We, we are here to work with the township, to make, we're part of the, part of the township.
Okay, and the worshippers that come to your facility, if there are similar facilities in North Brunswick, Lawrenceville, Edison, I assume that you're envisioning that the worshippers that come to this facility are primarily going to be the residents of this municipality?
That is correct, yeah. Franklin Township is a large town, and there are a lot of the, if you look at the census numbers, the Indian American population has grown, quite number, it's almost 20% or plus, and so there is enough number of people who can attend this temple.
Okay, so the people that are attending your facility in Edison will continue to attend services there, they're not going to get in their car from, in Edison and drive here?
No, no, there's no reason, and people who go to Isling, they go to Isling, and people who go to North Brunswick, they go to North Brunswick, and that's following, yeah.
Okay, are there priests, monks, clergy members, or somebody at the facility at all times?
Yes, there will be priests, there are different shifts, different, because they get tired too, so they take shifts and they come and do, take care of the temple, and there'll be some administrative people and taking care of everything, yeah.
Okay, but there will be nobody living at the property, we're not proposing any residences or anything else at the site, it will be strictly a house of worship?
Strictly a worship, house of worship.
Okay. As far as the activities that take place, you talked about the time and everything else, all of your activities will take place within the temple?
That's correct, there are no, even the current temple, we do not have any activities outside the temple.
Okay, and you're not proposing any outside activities at this facility?
That's correct, and we don't use any sound outside the temple.
Okay, does your temple perform weddings, funerals, or things like that, do they take place?
No.
Okay, do you have any other activities or events that, that you would run other than religious services?
We, you know, one thing about Sai Baba, he taught us about community service, so we'll be doing some blood drives, health camps, and book pack drives, things like that, food bank, food bank, raising food, getting food and all that.
And that would be the members of your congregation attending, whether it's a blood drive or bringing food for the food bank?
Right, yeah.
Okay, thank you, I have no further questions.
Are you on the land here in Somerset, right?
Yeah, we, we are the owners of the property.
That's correct, yeah.
Okay, any, any board questions?
Chairman, just a few, few questions, and I'm sure you can probably answer this. Just looking at the architecturals, I think you can answer this since, you know, the facility, there are two areas called Store 1, Store 2, it looks like that's more of a mechanical area, I assume that means storage, there's no, there's a gift shop, but there's no, two additional stores, this is for storage.
The architect will answer that.
Okay, would you be able to explain why there's a, what's the gift shop for?
Any, any temple you go there, because there are a lot of things that, different decoration material, things that idols, they bring from India, and people like to buy sometimes books, religious books, and just to, some, basically those type of things, some ornamental jewelry from belonging to that faith.
Okay, and just let me embellish on that, and that's open to members of your congregation, that is not a?
It's not a public store, yeah, it's not a shopping mall, yeah.
Okay, were you involved, I mean, I'll save that for the architect, that's all I have.
Ready? And we'll open to the public?
Just one, employees, like priests and employees, you said some administrative, how many employees you figure out, like, one time would be there?
At given time, the morning, probably two priests, maybe, and, you know, one or two administrative people.
Okay, thank you.
Will it be a kitchen?
Yeah, there is a kitchen, yeah.
Anything else on the, from the board?
Yeah, so, yeah, on the topic of a kitchen, and again, it might be for the architect, but I assume, you know, that the congregation had some discussions with the architect of what would be in the place of worship, so there is a kitchen and there is a dining area, what's the purpose of that? And where would it be used?
Yeah, what happens is that whenever you go to a Hindu temple, food is a main thing, so they serve what is called prasad, P.R.A.S.A.D., and this is an offering that made to the spiritual teacher, and then that's given to people, so it's like a small snack that you sit down and eat in the dining area and you go.
Okay, all right, thank you.
And again, I think this was raised in other applications, this facility is not going to, the dining area will not be rented out for events or anything of that nature?
No.
It is strictly used for your religious?
That's correct.
Actually, is any part of it rented out?
No.
Okay, we'll open to the public if anyone has a question to ask this witness. This is not your form to make a statement, you're asking questions concerning this witness's testimony. How about if you, are you going to speak? Gentleman in the green shirt?
May I ask?
Yeah.
Do I have to stand, or it's okay if I sit down? Yeah, okay.
Thank you. Good evening, Mr. Chivukla, thank you for that presentation. You mentioned some other sites, other locations where you currently have worship going on, you mentioned Lawrenceville and South Brunswick and North Brunswick, are those all rental properties, or do you own any property?
The, the, okay, I just want to clarify, it's not our property, the question our attorney asked was that are there any other facilities where temples that are practicing the same faith? And I said, yes, there's one in Lawrenceville, one in South Brunswick, one in North Brunswick, one in Isling, so we have a facility we're operating in Edison, 1665 Oakley Road, and if you go to the website, you have all the details about that website.
Okay, and I think you said that the Franklin site will replicate the temple in India, did I catch that?
That is correct, yeah.
And it's the first temple that you have where you actually own the property?
That is correct.
So it's a fairly significant development, you would say that you're, you've acquired property and that you're, you're building a temple for the first time that houses your deity, but you said you were, it's different from the other facilities in that you are only housing one deity in Franklin?
That is correct, yeah, so when you look at Shirdi in America, wherever, we have, Sai Baba is the main deity, and that's what, who we worship, and we're not, it's not significant, it's a real excitement about this property, yeah.
What I'm getting at is, it's an exciting development for the organization and for your devotees. You, you suggested that the devotees who go to the other sites in other parts of New Jersey would not, not be coming to the Franklin site?
I mean, there's no reason for them to come, that's what I said, yeah.
I see, okay, even, even though this is a different temple, it replicates the, the temple in India, it's a more significant establishment by the sound of it.
But, yeah, we live in the age of social media, and there's a lot of events are posted on Facebook, on YouTube, so people can see it, you don't have to physically come here.
And what about the festivals, the special holy days that you mentioned, would you expect devotees from, you know, North Jersey who are attending those other sites to come down to Franklin for those events?
Not necessarily, because, you know, if the facility is here in Franklin celebrating those festivals, the same celebration is occurring in other temples, and there's no reason for them to leave the temple that is closer to them to come to Franklin.
Right, okay. You know, a question that's been on my mind, on many minds, I think, is that it's, it's quite a large temple you're building?
That's correct.
You have a worship area that can accommodate, you know, almost 600 devotees, but what you've said is that you're really only expecting about 350 maximum to attend, but is there a spiritual reason, or is there another reason why you're building such a large facility when, you know, the attendance in comparison to the size is fairly low?
I'm going to object to the form of the question, council's arguing that, or stating that this is a large facility, the ordinance has a building coverage requirement, a maximum of 10%, this building is 2.69% building coverage.
Can I rephrase the question? Can you give us a little bit more background and color on the reasons for the size of the proposed temple in light of your expected attendance?
I don't know whether you have done this before, we, we prostrate in front of the, our deity, which is six feet, so I wanted to bring my yoga mat to show you how it is, and I want to invite you to join in doing that prestation, that's what we do, so when you do that, it can be bunched up together, so we need the space.
Right, I do yoga, so I appreciate that. Now, you mentioned some priests would be sort of on-site, do they, would they be actually residing at the temple?
I think, as I told the attorney, our attorney, that nobody will be residing at there, they will be commuting to go into the temple.
Okay, and in the, it may be an architectural question, but I think you can answer it, the architectural drawings have what look like two stories in the diagram in the facade, is this a one-story or a two-story structure?
And the architect demands that it's a one-story building, yeah.
Okay, well, the reason I asked it is because if there were a second story, it would, or was about the use?
Architect, and you can question him all you want.
Well, the, the traffic report that was submitted, and this was dated November 2019, I think was the only item in the application that actually had any representations as to expected visitation, and it said there, well, if fewer than 10 devotees may visit the temple on their way to work, and I think it also didn't acknowledge the weekend activity, is that, was there a change in the numbers that you anticipated, or?
I don't think there was any change, yeah, it's just, there was no change.
Right.
Let me just speak to that, I, I think, and the traffic expert will have to speak to that, but I'm looking at the traffic report and I'm seeing that they were evaluating the weekday peaks during the morning and afternoon rush, so that's a pretty typical thing for a traffic study to address, as opposed to the weekends when the traffic levels on South Middle Bush are much lower, that's what I'm assuming, so the traffic expert will have to confirm that.
I think that's better.
Anyway, his, his testimony doesn't?
I'm not a professional, so it won't count.
Right, let's just finally, Mr. Chivukla, I hope I'm saying your name correctly.
You're saying perfect.
Okay, thanks. Do you, I imagine that in the couple of years that you've been a tenant in, you said you've been established for 10 years, that's in the US, is it?
Yeah, in, in South Plainfield, New Jersey, yeah.
Your congregation must have grown over that time, do you, what do you do in terms of, do you, do you have activities devoted to growing your congregation, and what others?
See, you cannot compare Franklin to Edison, Edison is called Little India, and there's large population of Indian Americans, and who go there, and as our attorney said, there's no reason for the people from Edison to come here, so the question of growth, yes, you know, I mean, also the last three years, there was no growth because of the COVID-19 pandemic, so a lot of things, people are very careful, they had to go out with masks and all that, it is not the same, America has changed the last three years, the world, whole world has changed.
You'd have just one second, I'm. I have nothing else, thank you. I have nothing else, thank you.
Thank you.
The one issue that I think the applicant does need to clarify here is, we are getting, we do have different occupancy levels that have been discussed. The traffic report mentions an occupancy of 587. Look at the, I don't know if that's the building as a whole, but nonetheless, that's the figure that's in that, in that study. When you look at the architectural plans and the sitting area for prayer, that mentions an occupancy level of 445. And then we've heard some different figures today. So whether tonight or at another meeting, the applicant's going to have to clarify why these numbers are differing.
Okay, we are close to the public again, so you can begin your next witness.
Okay. We're going to have Mr. Joshi. Do we have, yeah, do we have an easel here? I think rather than fool around with the, yeah, but I actually have handouts too, so it's just as easy to probably do the board and, unless you, yeah, we have an easel. We can swear Mr. Joshi in and then.
You swear, you, there you go, raise your right hand. You swear the testimony about to give will be the truth, all the truth and nothing but the truth?
I do.
If you could say and spell your name, please.
My name is Kishore Y Joshi, K-I-S-H-O-R, middle initial is Y, last name is Joshi, J-O-S-H-I.
Mr. Joshi, are you a licensed architect in the state of New Jersey?
Yes.
And can you very briefly give the board the benefit of your educational and professional background?
Well, I'm a licensed architect here in New Jersey, as well as in so many other states. I was the president of the State Ball of Architects here in New Jersey, which was appointed by the governor. And I have about 40 years' experience. I have testified in so many boards, including North East Board, but in this town, because I built a couple of temples over here.
Okay, thank you.
And I'm a professional planner also, but I'm going to testify as an architect of the record.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Joshi. Mr. Joshi, you prepared the architectural plans on the mini-board over here, correct?
Yes.
Okay. And for the benefit of the board members, we made colored copies of this document, so I can hand it out to the members and we can mark that A1.
Yeah. A colored version of what was submitted?
Yes.
Of the architectural plans that were submitted?
Exactly, smaller copies.
Can I be able to provide extras for the absent member?
I have more than.
No, here, how about right here, so the public can see it? All right. Not standing.
Put it on the table. I'll start there. All right, let's try again. Mr. Joshi, we had marked as A1 the colored exhibit, which consists of a cover sheet and two pages, is that correct?
That's correct.
And the colored pages are a replica of what is in the plan set that we submitted to the board?
That's correct.
Okay. On page three, and let's go to page three first, which is the exterior, exterior elevations.
Thank you.
Okay. When you were retained by the temple to prepare the architectural plans for the building, what was the direction that you were given by the temple?
Their idea was to prepare a Sirdi temple in America. So that is why the title is Sirdi in America. So what their idea is that the temple in Sirdi, near Bombay, has a different architectural treatment, layout is almost the same. And so idea was to exterior as well as the interior to make a replica of the existing temple in Sirdi in Bombay.
Okay, now, we haven't gone to the site plan yet, but you have all four sides of the building shown on the exhibit on page three.
Right.
Can you orient the board as to what part of the building fronts along South Middle Bush Road and what part of the building, and how the rest of the building is oriented?
Yeah, the east elevation, which is the front of the building, at the roadside.
So that east elevation, which is the shorter elevation of the building, will front on South Middle Bush Road?
That's correct.
And then on the bottom of the exhibit is the north, is that, and is that where you have the main entrance to the facility?
That's correct.
Okay. And if, again, if you are looking at the temple from South Middle Bush Road, the entrance to the temple will be on the right side of the property?
It is on north elevation.
Yes, on the right side of the property, as you're looking at it from South Middle Bush Road.
Right.
Okay. And then obviously, the west side is the top.
Yeah, that's the rear.
Right. Now, the question that was asked by Ms. Bailey, is this a one or two-story building?
This is a one-story building, because we have created, it looks like a second story, but this is all fake. These are all fake windows, fake balcony, everything is the fake to reflect the elevation in India. So I tried to bring that architectural, you know, architectural treatment over here to make it look like that type of architectural treatment.
And the colors that are on the exhibit, which are some grays and blues and it looks like a reddish, are those the actual colors of the structure?
Very close to, very close to. Because the blue is that, that glass indicates, blue color indicates the glass, you know. And so it will be a gray color of the exterior walls. And, I'm sorry.
And what is the height of the building excluding the steeple?
34 feet 6 inches.
Okay. And what is the height of the steeple?
Dome height from the finished grade elevation is 51 feet 4 inches.
Okay. And how far back onto the building is that dome? Now, if you're looking at the property from South Middle Bush Road, how far is the dome set back from the front of the building?
I would say about 80 feet, you know, I did not scale it yet.
Okay. And is the dome capable of being illuminated?
Yes, if it is required by the owners.
So, and is the intent to illuminate the dome services that are taking place in the evening?
Yeah, on certain, I think, festival, I think usually they do that.
Okay. Other than illuminating the dome, is there any exterior illumination on the building?
There will be at the, you know, it's a code requirement, when you have exit doors, you require a light to get out.
Okay.
So that is the minimum requirement by the town, I mean, by the IBC code.
Okay. And where are the doors on this exhibit?
Right here, these are the doors. You can see, this is the main entrance over here. Same thing, lighting will be here next to the door, right here, door, all exit doors going to have a lighting, emergency lighting, actually.
And that's emergency lighting?
Right, exactly, right.
And the main entrance is on the parking lot side of the temple, correct?
That's correct, which is north side.
Yeah, and functionally, devotees that come to the facility will be either, will use that entrance, or would they be using also the front entrance, the entrance closer to South Middle Bush Road?
Mostly people will park their car on the north side of the building, so they will park their car and come to the main entrance. Because see what happened in Hindu temple, we had to take the shoes out. So I have provided, in the main entrance, I have provided the shoes rack, toilet area, then if somebody wants to wash their feet, so we have a facility for feet wash also. So that is the procedure. So when you enter, you have to take your shoes out. So that's the main entrance, they are going to use it. So that's the purpose. Yeah, somebody can use that, but hardly they will use it because they have to take the shoes out, otherwise you cannot go into the temple with the shoes. So that is the idea about that.
All right, so the intent in your design is to really channel all of the devotees to come in through that one main entrance?
That's correct, north elevation.
Okay. Can we, if we can, Mr. Healy, flip that, or do we go back to one page?
Thank you, sir.
Okay, and again, this would be the interior layout of the building, correct?
That's correct.
Can you walk the board through this and if we look at the bottom of the page, that's, in the middle bottom, that's the entrance?
That's right. Okay, let's start with the front entrance. The building is, the first floor area is 28,616 square feet. This is, this drawing indicates the preliminary first floor plan. So parking lot is right here on the northern side of the building. So when you enter, you enter into the porch, then you come into the vestibule, then there are two sides, one man's side and one woman's side. So men will go on the men's side and women will go on the women's side. Take the shoes out, then you come, enter, this is the men's toilet, and then this is the pit wash, like I was explaining. If somebody wants to wash the feet, they can wash over here. Then after doing that, they can go to the temple. And this is the sitting area for the temple. The occupancy is 445 feet, 445, 445 occupancy, I'm sorry. It just depends upon the IBC code, five square feet per person. Temple is consists of the main deity, which is Sai Baba temple. And we have a restricted area, optisitting area. We have three rooms in the back, which is like a garment for the gods, cooking area for the, I mean, food for the god. There won't be any cooking, everything will be done outside. There are emergency exit in the front of the building also. And then on the other side of the building, we have a gift shop, office and the conference room. Now, gift shop is like Mr. Shukal explained, that if somebody wants to buy a book or some small statue or religious articles, that's the purpose of the gift shop. And that also, some, you know, donation area counter is there, it's like a multipurpose room. So donation inquiry, gift shop, and that's the type of thing. The office is provided in the back, so this is for the administrative purpose. And the conference room, like there are a lot of volunteers there. So in case they want to have a meeting or what they are planning and whatnot, so that's the purpose of it. It's a similar, another multipurpose type of room. Storage area one and two, that was a question asked over here. So number, two storage are provided. One storage is for the outside maintenance purpose, because we don't have a basement here, this is slab one, right? So we have no basement, that's why we have provided for the outside maintenance, you know, lumber and whatever thing. And storage number one is the, for the inside, see in the festival, in the Hindu temple in the festival, we do a lot of decorations. Every festival has there some significance about decoration. So every time, they prepare it. So all those things, we had to store it, so that is why that storage is there. So that is, now, mechanical, electrical and plumbing rooms are also provided, because building will be sprinkler, entire building will be sprinkler. Then you go to the kitchen area, that will be a warm-up kitchen. And whoever takes the prasad, we call, they have to eat, we cannot just take it out and whatnot. So that is why the dining facility is provided. And basically, regular corridor is there, emergency exits, more than required by the fire department. Occupancy is for 587 people, based on the IBC code. There is a table there in the code, so that is why, how you count it. So you can read that on the left-hand side.
All right, so to answer Mr. Healy's question, and on that exhibit, on that page, you have broken down every single area that can be occupied within the building, and based on the code, you have come up with the occupancy for each of those areas, correct?
Exactly, yeah.
And you make the assumption in coming up with that number, that each and every one of those areas would be occupied at the same time?
Correct.
Okay. When in reality, people come to worship and then they go to partake of the food after they worship, so the same people are in two different places in the building at one time, correct?
Correct.
And also, based on your, on the testimony, Mr. Shubhakla, we, the attendance is sort of a rubbery attendance, so except for the high holidays, you probably don't have the maximum occupancy in any of these sections that are listed on that exhibit, correct?
Correct.
But for the record, what we did is identify each and every habitable space and then came up with the occupancy for it, correct?
That's correct, this is the code requirement anyway. That's correct, this is the code requirement anyway, so.
And, and that's based on code, and that number is, just for the record, total occupancy?
It's five hundred and eighty-seven.
Okay. Um, couple other real quick questions. Uh, you indicated, if you look at your exhibit, on the right side, there's a, uh, tan area, I don't know if that's the right color, at the very end of, of the, the building.
Yes?
Yes, what's that?
That, that is the, the preparing entrances. It's like a preparing entrances.
Okay. So all of those areas that are in that tan color are, are entrances, they're not habitable areas?
No, 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 they are all open. Instead of having a, a black top entrance, we provide a little bit nicer entrances, you know.
Okay. Thank you. I have, I have no further questions. Anything from the board?
In the schedule down on the bottom left, it indicates office one, two, and three. Maybe I'm not looking at this properly, but I only see one office, I see number three. Where would one and two be?
Oh, yeah, you're right. Yeah, the design was changed and, uh, yes, that is an error. They tell us there only one office.
Okay, thank you.
Anything else?
Yes, I have a couple things. Um, you, you, you say this is a one, one-story building?
Uh-huh. Yeah, it is one-story building. It's only, this is a one-floor plan, one-floor.
It's all, it's all open to the ceiling then, correct?
Yes, it's a, well, so, uh, ceiling will be about twenty-five feet height in certain areas. Because we are going to have a mechanical ductwork sprinkler system, so that will take a lot of power, you know, a lot of space. So that is why, uh, we have, you know, high-story building.
Okay. And what was my other question? I had another one, I lost it. You'll come back to me.
Okay, no problem, anytime.
Any one in the meantime? Mark?
Just a few. Um, so just on the occupancy, um, so there's a code, you have some, you know, a, a pretty large, wide lobby and fourteen-foot-wide corridor. Does the code not, um, count that as occupancy?
No, no, people don't live there, don't sit there, it's not in the code.
Okay, thank you. Um, and then in the, the yellow area, um, that's the prayer hall.
Right.
And what it looked like to me was the four hundred and forty-five-person occupancy. It looked to me like it wasn't based on the entire yellow area, it was based on the square footage of that smaller box-
Correct.
-that you called the sitting area.
Correct.
Okay. Why don't you include the entirety of the yellow area?
Because in the temple, again, there is a restricted area. People cannot go up to certain distance from the temple, main deities. So you require that ten feet, plus you require the aisle, as, as per the code, you cannot have a wall-to-wall people sit there. So you require the aisle space, it's a fire department requirement.
Okay.
So these are the requirement based upon the, uh, based upon the fire department and the building code.
Okay. So when I'm looking at it, I see, obviously, there is that red area that you've identified as the restricted areas.
Right, right.
Um, but then behind that, there's four idols.
But there are more, very, very like a picture, not even idols, picture of the idol, somebody wants to worship, you know, so that, they, they can do it, you know, the, but men will be the Sai Baba, main deity will be there.
Okay. So despite the fact, and correct me if I'm wrong, despite the fact that worshippers would be able to, it looks like they'd be able to walk around restricted areas and, and, and-
But they can do-
View the idols. You, you don't have to count that, that, that area around the restricted area towards occupancy because of current, the way the code reads?
No, no, people, people cannot sit in behind the idol.
They can't sit?
Cannot sit.
No, okay.
So that's just to walk around.
Okay. So under the code, if they can't sit, you don't count it towards occupancy?
No, that's exactly right.
Okay. So then, so then what you're showing in this yellow area, in that box-
Right.
-with the necessary areas for, um, aisles, et cetera-
Right.
-that box is the area that per code, people would be able to sit?
Usually you put like a, a railing type of thing, movable railing, so people know that this is your restricted area and whatnot, you know.
Okay. And the, thank you. Um, the four, the four hundred and forty-five-person occupancy-
Yeah.
-was that, um, something that-
Based on the IBC code, five square feet.
Yeah, that's not, that's not my, you know, I get, that's not my question. My question is, was that, um, was that requested to have an occupancy of that level? Well, how did you, why did you provide a sitting area for four hundred and forty-five people?
But this is estimated like a maximum three hundred person, some, uh, on the occasion of the some festival, I mean, festival days. So you don't design the building for minimum, we design for the maximum, that's what it is.
Okay. All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, I remembered my other question.
Okay, go ahead.
Um, the kitchen, that, you, you don't prepare food there, you're just gonna-
No, this, this is a warm-up kitchen, so people bring the food, and if they're required to warm up, so they'll be just warming up and that's it. Then there won't be any cooking, cooking on the facilities.
Okay. All right. Anything else from the board?
Just to follow up on that, is there a garbage or recycling storage area?
Yeah, I think, and you may testify on that.
Okay, thank you.
Other questions? All right, we'll open it to the public.
Yep, there you go. Good evening, Mr. Joshi, thank you.
Yes, sir, thank you.
Couple of follow-up questions. The dome, if you're looking at this exhibit, can you point to where the dome is? Is it above the worship, the restricted worship area?
This area?
Yeah. Where is the dome in relation to this, this-
Pardon?
Where, where is the dome in relation to this floor plan?
It will be right here, right at the top.
Okay. And, and what is the reason for it being in that location?
Because we provide the dome where the main deity is. So when you, people will go or drive or whatever, so people knows that there is a main deity at that particular point.
Right. So is it not an option to have the dome on the other end of the temple?
No, you cannot put anywhere, on the toilet side or anywhere, no, you cannot do that.
Right. And how, how is the dome being illuminated? Is that elimination from the outside?
So it will be, uh, from the rooftop.
So that the lights will be outside of the dome?
It will be spreading up, like a wash, you know, wash, wall washup type of, right, yeah.
Right. Um, and will that elimination occur during the weekdays?
Well, I think they have to, I think, uh, temple administrative will, I know, answer that question, when they do and whatnot, you know. I'm, I'm the designer, right now, so they have to tell Mr. Shukala may answer that for.
Yes, if I may ask that question, I think it's relevant because of the visibility of the dome.
Uh, no, I didn't, I'm sorry, I didn't understand your question. What was your question?
I wonder if Mr. Shivak could, could address that question? The question is when the elimination will occur?
Why don't you finish your questions of this witness and then I can call him back to answer that question?
Okay, that's fine. Um, now, if we could flip just to the, um, the elevations-
Sure.
-please. And you had indicated that the, um, the ceiling is twenty-five feet.
Finish ceiling is twenty-five feet. No, finish ceiling is like this.
Right.
So the ductwork and all sprinkler system and everything will be above. So that will accommodate between the, uh, highest point of the roof, which is thirty, uh, thirty-four feet.
Thirty-four feet. So that means there's about fourteen feet of the structure above the ceiling.
No, here, here, let, let me explain you. The building, the top of the roof is thirty-four feet, six inches from the finished grade level.
Mm-hmm.
The out of that, three feet is the parapet, which is open parapet.
Okay.
So building height is thirty-one feet, six inches. All right? So then you minus twenty-five feet-
Yeah.
-so it'll be six, seven feet, which is a normal ductwork and this type size of the building, sprinkler system and whatnot, you know.
Um, I see. So it was my understanding that, that a parapet, it, when it's constructed on top of a-
The roof, parapet is not inside the roof.
Understood. So it's not the parapet that is housing the ductwork and the utility?
Right here, this is the parapet, right here, this is parapet.
And what is, what is it, what is the parapet for?
Parapet, because there is a code requirement, somebody goes on the roof, there, there is somebody walking, you have to protect, so nobody can fall down.
Wait, will you have, so is, is the-
It's code requirement, it's code requirement.
Uh, but will you also be providing access for your devotees on the roof?
Yeah, there'll be some access panel, of course, to go on the roof.
But, but I mean, i- is part of the, the worship or the activities of the, the temple, will they occur on the roof?
No. No, 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 this is the area, again, this is for the maintenance purpose.
Okay.
Nobody can go up, it's, it's all keyed, you know, it's all keyed, you know, lock, lock type of access.
Right. And so, and the dome, you said, it, the dome is fifty-one feet, but the dome itself is not fifty-one feet?
No, this is the top of the dome, top of the dome.
So what's the-
So it's about twenty feet, if you add up.
Twenty feet? The, the dome is twenty feet from the top of the parapet or from this, from the top of the structure?
Here, here, I think, the, the top of the dome is fifty-one feet, fifty-one feet, four inches. That is the highest point of the, no, temple.
Mm-hmm.
Highest point. So you deduct twenty, thirty-four feet from that, so that would be your size of the dome.
Let, let me, let me ask in a different way, and I'll just do some math.
Yeah, here it is.
So the, the top of the parapet, oh, I'm sorry, the top of the dome is fifty-one feet, the top of the parapet is thirty, thirty, thirty-four and, thirty-four and a half.
Fifty-one.
So what I'm hearing then is, the dome is going to extend about sixteen feet above the parapet. Is that correct?
Seventeen feet?
Yeah, approximately.
And, and for the record, just for clarity, because, uh, the parapet does not count in the height of the structure. Parapets that are five feet or less do not count. So, so the, in reality, even though the top of the parapet is thirty-four and a half feet, the actual height of the building is-
Thirty-one feet, four inches.
Thirty-one feet, four inches.
Six inches.
Six inches.
Okay. And, uh, can you speak to the size of the dome? Was that something that, um, was that specified for you or what, what was the reason for the size of the dome?
Well, this is the symbol, this is the symbol of this temple. So when, and this is Sai Baba, when we replica, that is the bone in India. So that's what we had to do it, and that is how the shape of the dome, it will be prefab dome actually. We are going to import from India. We are going to prefab all architecture treatment, all the decorations and everything, we are going to manufacture in India and ship it over here, it's like a prefab. That's what we are going to do it.
Understood. Now, if we could just flip to the, the floor plan, I have a, a quick question on the, um, on the floor plan.
Thank you. Yeah, go ahead.
There's an entrance on, uh, the, I think this is that, the south side of the, the floor plan.
Right here?
Yes.
There is no entrance, that's exit.
Or an exit, what's the-
There are all exits, there are all exits.
So, um, are those emergency exits?
That's correct.
So those won't be used by devotees going in and out and using that?
No, that will be, well, you know, like a emergency exit, no, emergency, but that's the fire exit.
Okay. And what's the purpose of the patio that, that attaches to that exit?
Pardon?
The, the patio, that, that paved area that, that extends from that exit?
Yes.
What's the purpose of that?
But when you walk out from the, you don't want to walk on the dirt. So we make a little bit decoration type of, instead of having black top or something, or glass or black top, so we make a little bit nicer, uh, pool area, that's what it is.
Okay. But, but will that area actually be used for-
No, it's, it's like an emergency exit. You come out and that, that's what it is.
Okay. I have nothing further, thank you.
Thank you.
Any, first, you're finished, okay? I, uh, I'm thinking of calling it for the night because we have a number of board members who have to listen to tapes. And it's been, let's just put it this way, it took us about six months to do two witnesses the last time, so I think we're well ahead of the game.
And, and given that I had a 6:00 AM plate this morning, I would concur that we can call it a night. Uh, I, in, in speaking to Mr. Healy, I think we were going to back this up with a June 2nd hearing date?
Yes, it's going to be carried to June 2nd.
And just, uh-
You were going to call Mr. Shiva Kula back about the-
Yeah, I, I, I discussed it with him. It, it's not his intent, it's not their intent to illuminate the dome except on, on we, on Saturdays and Sundays, and for the high holy days during the week, the dome will not be illuminated.
Right. Uh- You have traffic planning and engineering left, right?
That is correct. Uh, Christina's, June 2nd?
Yes, June 2nd.
Is there another matter on that date?
Quite a few, um, there's actually three other matters on that.
Are any of them mine? So we may want to move them.
Yeah, they're yours.
They're all mine? Oh, that's just a quick extension.
Forecast-
That's not going to go. Well, sixty-four castas is not going to go. Uh, I think we can do live devgo behind this one, so we can continue, yeah. My, my suggestion, Mr. Chairman, is to move this to June 2nd, hopefully put this first, other than I have one just, uh, quick extension, which is about two minutes, and then the other application, I have two other applications. One will not be ready for June 2nd, and the other one will put behind this one, because since we started this one, we'll, we'll try to conclude it that night.
I, I think that that's a, a good forecast. I think it's possible, absolutely possible to conclude it, and I also think that we'll be pretty sure of having a full board, who, and those who've missed tonight will have been brought up to date, uh, with the certification. So we should be, I think we should be looking to finish it that night.
That would be wonderful.
That's why we do them in person instead of on the computer.
No comment.
June 2nd, right?
Do you need an extension of time, Christine, or you're good? For the record, if you're not good, I will grant an extension through the end of June.
Yes, we have-
Good until-
July 31st.
Oh, then you're good till July 31st, good.
And there's no further notice, correct?
Thank you. Down, there's no further notice.
Reconvene June 2nd, this will be first on the agenda. Any other comments, questions?
Well, no, it's not going to be first, there'll be one before it, but, yeah.
He said it's a, a brief one.
So we'll meet on June 2nd, this will be carried to 7:30 PM, it'll start, it won't be the first one, but it'll-
All right, anything further?
Since some members are not here, I think I will ask Mr. Joshi to come back on that date in case any of the board members-
No problem, no problem.
-who are not, who are not here, want to ask him questions, he'll be available, or Mr. Shiverkula also.
Thank you, thank you, Bob.
Okay, is there a motion to adjourn?
No move.
Second, medium adjourn.